Good evening and welcome to the Norfolk Planning Board meeting on June 11th. Please be aware that the meeting is being audio and videotaped for consumption at home. We're going to make our first order of business this evening, a reorganization of the board for our coming year. As a result of the election, we have two new board members and we need to vote on the chair, the vice chair, and the secretary. So with that, let me open the nomination process for chair and ask for nominations for the chair for the coming year.
I will nominate Walter to re-serve another term since he did so well last 12 months.
I'll second that.
We have one nomination. Any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor of Walter Byron as chair for the coming year, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we open the nomination for vice chair. I nominate John Weddleton.
I second that.
Have any other nominations for vice chair? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, John.
Yes, thank you.
And now we have a nomination for secretary. Now, the duties of the secretary are twofold. One, to review the mail that is received by the planning board in the intervening month between the last meeting and the current meeting, and to extract from that anything that should be brought to the attention of the board, and usually at the end of the meeting, those notes are put on the table and read. Second duty is to edit the minutes and present the minutes for acceptance during the meeting. So do we have a nomination for secretary?
I nominate Gary Searle.
Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Do we have any other nominations for secretary? All those in favor of Gary Searle, please say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Gary.
It was unanimous at once.
All right. Having said that, our first order of business after that is 113 North Street. We've received a request, a three lot definitive subdivision, we received a request for continuance, so we need a motion to continue.
When is our next meeting?
Our next meeting is July 9th.
Motion to continue 113 North Street until July, what was it?
9th.
9th at 7:00 P.M.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It is a vote. The next item is 102 Cleveland Street slash 15 Fruit Street.
Nope, Seven Shire Drive.
Sorry, duh, 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 yep.
We've got three more minutes.
Three more minutes, okay. Well, we can do a little tap dance on the desk, I suppose, here to kill that. Let's see.
We need a planning board representative to the CPC.
CPC, that's true. Our former member, Greg, was the, Damiano was the representative of CPC, and the planning board always sends a member to their CPC meetings. So do we, first of all, do we have any volunteers for that gentleman?
Could you provide a little more information about the...
Yeah, the CPC is the...
You would love it.
Is the group...
Lovely people.
The group that deals with the funds collected through the tax system, and they spend the funds on historical restoration, on recreation, and affordable housing. And they're required by law to allocate at least 10% of the funds every year to those...
Open space, too.
An open space, yeah, okay. I missed that, open space, too.
Open space and recreation.
And so they get together and deliberate on where the best way to, place to spend those funds are. Is it on recreation? Is it on, it's not mutually exclusive. They can spend money in all of those areas at the same time, should they choose to do so.
They meet monthly, quarterly?
I, Betsy, how often do they...
I'm not really sure. Is it monthly?
They definitely meet monthly.
Well, we have a...
The first Wednesday of the month.
I'm sorry?
First Wednesday.
First, so it sounds like it's a monthly session.
They're staring at our end.
You want to...
Thank you, Gary. I am okay with it, providing they don't need another secretary. I guess so. I'll do it.
All right. Gary, thank you very much. I appreciate that, and you can report back to us on what is going on at those meetings.
So they will contact me or send me their schedule, and the planning board will notify them that I'll be attending.
I'll notify them, give them your email address, and they'll keep you informed of the meetings.
Okay. All right, it's now 7:10.
You should vote to designate Gary, I would think, right?
Do we need to vote to do that? All right.
Yeah, you do, sorry.
Okay, so, all right, we need a motion to accept Gary as our representative to the community preservation committee.
So moved.
Second.
We have a second, all right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Gary. All right, it's now 7:10, so we can address the 7 Shire Drive site plan, stormwater management permit, earth removal permit, and special permit continued from May 1st.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
I'm a civil engineer. This is 7 Shire Drive, lot 21. Proposed use warehouse, 60 by 100-foot building, warehouse and office. Can you put up 2.0?
2.0, you said?
So here's the building. We have proposed parking, nine standard spaces on this side, two standard and two handicap, one being then accessible in the front. This is the turmous pavement here. We have a piece of concrete pad in the back, behind the building, for their use. We've got Cape Cod berm all the way around, except for the very front, which is slope granite at the drive. Curbing in the back. This area here, we've made gravel, because they have a big truck that, there's three garage doors here in the back, and he's got a big vehicle that would come in and back into one of those doors, so we kept that gravel, because grass just wouldn't make it. Outside storage, 4,400 square feet over here. As far as fencing, we have, lot next door has white vinyl that comes to here, so they're going to show a matching piece here to there, just to screen that side. Then we've got pressure-treated stockade fence, six foot high this side, pressure-treated stockade here, actually it ends here, and then we've got 24 feet of six-foot chain link fence with a 24-foot sliding gate with privacy screening for this section. Concrete walk to the front door, got some separate doorways for their use. How about 3.0?
While that's still up, what's going to be stored in the storage, outdoor storage area?
Outdoor storage is going to be, what, a couple of...
Storage trailers, we have just like miscellaneous pipe racks.
I'm sorry, not for us, but for at home, could you use a mic?
We're going to have it for, we have storage trailers for miscellaneous parts for our business, a pipe rack for different, various types of pipe we use for work. We're a landscaping, excavating company, and just some small trailers for machinery and stuff like that will be stored back there.
This is our grading plan. We've got a ridge line here. This stuff is going to pitch back here, pitch towards the corner. We've got a break in the Cape Cod berm here. We've got a two-foot wide grass swale, big drainage from there. The front comes this way. We've got a catch basin here, another one in this corner, and that's going to feed back to the grass swale.
What's the slope on the abutment of lot 20? Or 10-foot slope down?
Well, if you go by these...
That's all I've got.
I think these are...
Those are one foot.
Those are one, so there's four feet.
Are yours every two feet? I can't read them.
No, ours are every one.
Every one foot?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that just like a three-to-one slope?
Yeah, I'm sure it's, yeah, three-to-one max.
And that's going to be stabilized with grass?
Yes, you'll see on the planting plan, I'll show you. Go to, it's 5.0 for a second. So this is the landscaping plan. We have three street trees in the front. We call them out as red maple for now. Those will be determined, the type will be determined with planning board slash design review board to decide which, what's out there now. I couldn't determine what's out there in the winter, so they alternate, red maple and something, and oak will do the same, but, so there's a note in there that they, you know, they need to consult before they plant them. Same as the lot we did next door. You can see the shaded areas are landscaping, all landscaping up here. We've got arborvitae's up here, eight to 10 feet high, to screen that storage area. We've got arborvitae's here, row of hedge arborvitae's here, to screen that portion so that if you're looking, you won't be able to see through to the area in the back. And then we've got various shrubs scattered around.
And everything from that horizontal line back to the back part of the, is crushed down, all the way, including...
Gravel, yes.
Yeah, including the storage area.
Yes.
Okay.
So there's no machinery stored in the outside storage, correct?
Correct.
Just pot.
Trailer or two, he said.
Storage trailers, pipe racks, things like that.
What's the percent of lot coverage?
It's 40...
1.8.
It's 48.
Okay.
Oh, 42.
Yep, okay.
41.8. Can you go to 4.0 for one second? This is the utility plan. We have a storage tank for the floor drains in the building. We have a septic tank coming out here, comes down to a, another 1,000 gallons septic tank to serve as a pump chamber, and we pump up to the stub here. We have two water lines, one domestic, two-inch, one fire, six-inch. The fire, they're going to just bring up to, into the building and stub. They're not going for fire protection right now, they don't need to, but they're going to bring it in for future use. We've got underground electric coming up, and we have gas. Gas comes from across the street. So this is the only one that has no stubs, the gas they're going to have to come across. There's, you know, there's a box there for electrical, and there's stubs for water and sewer stub. So all the sewer comes out, pumps out, goes, connects to an existing force main, comes around the corner, all the way down to the community septic system in the back.
Okay. So all your stormwaters just tying into the subdivision?
Yes, there's an existing stub, each lot has one that ties in, and goes out to the detention basin, which is on the other side of lot 22.
And the roof drains, they tie into the stormwaters?
Roof drains tie into the swale, yes.
They tie into the swale?
Into the swale, yes. Because you have to capture that area, so we capture it in the grass swale.
Did we have a previous question at a previous meeting, maybe just whether we got to Shire Drive, whether or not the drainage system was still viable as originally designed? I thought that came up previously. Does everything channel? Do we know if it works properly the way it was intended to...
In the subdivision you're talking about?
In the subdivision, yeah.
I haven't heard anything different. The police station was disconnected to it, so...
Okay.
Yeah.
So it must be functioning.
I've never seen water. Lot of big trees in it now.
I'll tell you what, just for confirmation, Rich, would you ask DPW that question and get an answer for the next meeting? But I think the answer sounds like it. The absence of news is good news in this case, we hope.
On the outside storage, is there a special permit that you're applying for?
Yes.
Okay.
If you get over 1,000.
Over 1,000, yep.
Let's see, we got a letter from the design review board dated June 11th. I presume you've seen that and...
Just sorry, before I left the office.
Before you left the office.
Actually, I, the last sheet in your packet, I tried to make a change.
Yeah.
I tried to put them, you'll see, I did a little bit before I left, so.
Right, okay.
Because I know the, we showed the shrubs up here, and it looked like they were in the gravel, so they requested a raised mulch bed for those.
Yep.
The, my planting table said the arborvitae's were two feet high, they're eight to 10 feet in there, that.
Yep.
They requested that the fences, all the fences be labeled.
Yep.
Those are now labeled on that sheet.
Right, okay. And we got a letter from Beta dated June 6th. Since Phil is here, he can comment on anything that's outstanding or remains an open issue.
No, I think, I think they've addressed all the issues that we, we were able to raise. We've met once or twice.
No, we didn't meet on this one, but we had to, we met a lot, together a lot.
Yeah, yeah, so this is very...
We had two iterations of...
Very similar to five, right?
Yes.
The next door neighbor, that's the, they used the same swale system for roof runoff due to high groundwater. Seems appropriate for this, for this site as well. They, they are asking for, what, a half dozen waivers, which you may just want to review those. The item doesn't sound, these are very similar to what we, again, did for five Shire.
We have granite curbing at the radius entering the site, is that what's normally done or no?
So, I don't recall. I think they've done granite at the throats and then...
Well, granite at the throats, yep. And then Cape Cod.
Cape Cod after that, yeah. That's what I was asking.
So that is one of the waivers they're asking for. They're asking for a sidewalk in the front, along the frontage.
Yep. Sidewalk's on the other side of the street, right?
Yep. They're asking for a waiver of a swale instead of subsurface recharge. Again, that's what we...
Yep.
Designed for five Shire. Cape Cod berm, which is the one we just talked about, stormwater drainage should be contained on site, so this is part of a larger subdivision, and there's a central stormwater basin. The only thing they had to do was add additional recharge based on the difference in the regs since the subdivision was created till now, so the, obviously the roof recharge and the swale will accommodate that. Site lighting, they're only providing wall packs and traffic study. Site's not likely to generate significantly more than probably what was designed for in the original subdivision, so we don't see a problem with that either, so.
On the, on the lighting, we've usually requested a drawing showing the lighting positions and the illumination of the lights.
Yes, it was, it was, automatic plan was.
Okay, it's not part of this package, but you, we've got it.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't put everything in there.
But we got it, is what you said, okay.
Yeah, it was provided before.
Okay.
I think we had to correct one light on the side.
Yep, okay.
A little bit of spillo in that one, so they changed that one.
So other than correcting the revision date on the plans, I think they're pretty well...
Is there any maintenance required on the grass swale? Because there's a maintenance plan referenced, but I don't see any reference to maintaining the grass swale.
There is, there is an O and N plan.
Okay.
Both a written plan and a 11 by 17 that shows the catch bases of the swale.
That's captured in there.
Yeah, there's a, there's a schedule, and I think there's an approximate cost estimate to do it annually, four times a year.
Any other questions from board members?
Middle building, metal roof?
Yes.
Asian black.
Pearl gray siding, slate gray roof, white garage doors in the back. Brown doors, brown, bronze, bronze, you know, man doors with, I believe, bronze.
All the components are listed on the plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Design review board had us correct. We didn't have the colors listed, we now have the colors on that.
That's what I figured, okay, thank you. Any further questions from board members? Then we should, I think, take a recommendation to close the hearing.
Well, we got an earth removal permit, too, right?
Yes.
We going to review that or...
Well, we should.
Is that a separate filing?
So I don't think it's required. I don't, I mean, we did, we did put a section in here in terms of relating to, they're 990 cubic yards of removal.
I'm just asking, do they have to, by the bylaws, file for a earth removal permit?
So they did, yeah.
We did file for it.
They did file for that, yes.
All right, that's what I was asking.
There is a stormwater management permit, earth removal permit, and a site plan approval and a special permit.
And the storage.
Correct. The quantity wasn't...
You said 900?
990.
These permits, Rich, are all incorporated into...
So you would issue, yeah.
One.
Well, we...
They're all separate permits.
We do, so the special permit, the site plan, we would combine together, and then we would just do a separate stormwater and earth removal permit right now.
And storage?
The storage one, I would incorporate it, we would...
With the special permit?
Yeah, with the site plan. We've done, I'm trying to think of the last one, we actually put the special permit and site plan together. They're separate permits, but we combine them into one decision.
Okay.
Need a little bit.
So we're just signing one document then for all these permits?
I don't know, probably two. The earth removal would be separate one, right? That's what I heard you say.
Yeah, the earth removal is separate. Actually, the removal permit...
Stormwater?
The stormwater permit.
So it's three that we need to sign.
Correct.
Okay, all right. All right, having cleared that up, is there any reason we shouldn't close a public hearing on those permits? Anyone in the audience wish to comment or ask a question or whatever? No, hearing none? Then the chair will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we will have these decisions for you for the next meeting. And good luck, thank you. Looks like a good plan.
Thanks.
Look forward to seeing the building constructed.
Change the member names on the plan, right?
Yes.
The member, oh. Okay, now we can talk about 102 Cleveland, 15 Fruit Street, estate lot, special permit, and A and R plan, continued from May 1st. Sir.
Mr. Chairman, just before you get, did you want to hold Phil for discussion, Sandy Noel, after this, or...
Yeah, we can rearrange the order and do that, but let's get through this one.
Yes, okay.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, my name's John Lawson, engineering 46 East Street in East Wall Pole. Do have five or six revised plans you can look at. So the reason for the delay, I think we filed this in February, was that there's wetlands on the site, and, you know, you have to have a certain, the estate lot and on any lot. So this is part of a four-lot subdivision. This is one of the lots of a four-lot subdivision, so.
Estate lot, right.
So one of the comments was that we wanted the conservation commission to review, and they have, and they've closed their hearing. Don't think they've issued their order of conditions yet, but basically, we're not making any changes to the plans for the conservation commission. So the wetland line has been confirmed by the agent, and they're in the process of writing their order of conditions. The other changes to the plan were the fire department asked, and there's a very little tiny note down there. So unfortunately, the plan that we work on is 20 scale, but this one's 40, but there's a little tiny note down the bottom that says that the owner has to provide at the driveway entrance, a street number visible from the street so that the fire department and the police department can find the house in a reasonable manner.
Yep.
We also added on the top of the sheet, a typical driveway section at the very top there, based on a comment from the town planner, and we added a signature block where the planning board can sign on the plan if you desire. Even though that plan is set up to be filed at the registry of deeds, I don't think it's really a plan that's fileable, that you could file at the registry of deeds. The plan that gets filed at the registry of deeds will be the A and R plan that will have the estate lot on it. And I did drop those plans off in the application and the check earlier today. So that, that's where we stand.
All right. Do you anticipate receiving the findings from the CONCOM shortly?
Someday.
Someday.
Yeah.
But, you know, we walked the site at least once, I think, maybe twice, myself with Janet DeWonge, the agent, so. There's no changes in the wetland flag locations. One reason we waited, we had to wait for them is on the... One reason we waited, we had to wait for them is, um, on the, um, Mass GIS, it does show that wetland as a potential vernal pool, but, um, we really didn't find any evidence that it's, uh, absolutely a vernal pool. Most of our work or that's in the location where the vernal pool would be, as it's shown on the plan, so the deeper part of that wetland is in the back left corner, as you're standing there on Fruit Street, and that's where the house and the driveway and everything is more than a hundred feet from the wetland anyway, so. There was no, there's gonna be no change to the plans.
Yep.
Based on the Conservation Commission's review.
Okay.
Well, I shouldn't say that. They did ask us to put these plaques at the fifty-foot no disturb area, which, which we, actually, we proposed it and we agreed that it would make sense, um, and we do this in other towns, where they put plaques that basically say, um, no disturbance beyond this point per order of the Conservation Commission.
Which in essence are along this red line.
Um, can I just look at the line that you're looking at? Is that, say, the fifty foot?
Yeah.
Fifty foot weather buffer.
Yeah, along the fifty foot buffer, or i- in some locations, actually, a little bit farther away from the wetland, um, as Janet and I sort of agreed to places. So I think we're gonna put, uh, ten or fifteen plaques out there to, um, uh, delineate the, sort of, the sensitive area.
Okay. Okay, questions from the board?
Sure, I have a question, I'm not sure if it's for the applicant or the board, but I, we're okay with septic systems inside the setbacks and essentially against the property line?
It's gonna be ten feet from the property.
Ten feet from the property.
And this is, the field is almost totally outside of the hundred foot, right?
Right.
My eyes, sorry.
I believe so, I believe it's totally outside the hundred foot.
Yeah, well, it's kinda, kinda small.
Right.
Twelve tent purposes, it's out, yeah.
Right, right. And, and that was, you know, not to labor this, but that was another request of the Conservation Commission, um, the field is, is quite a ways from the proposed house, but, uh, in the location of the proposed house, even though there's gravel soil, there's a thin layer of soil that, uh, was kind of iffy, and both myself and the Board of Health Agent decided that leaving the system where it's shown on this plan, where they didn't have that thin layer of kind of a silty soil, it's so thin, you can't really do a perk test, so it's hard to say, and if you really, uh, apply Title V in a strict manner, you can't really just take it out and then add sand over it, because there wasn't four feet below it. So, even though there was four feet total, it was this little thin layer, so we just decided it's best just leave it alone, so, um, as I said, no changes to.
John, your question about the septic system being a hundred feet away, the, the estate lot is, but the lot against the street is not.
Right, so in Title V and the Norfolk rules and regulations are that a septic system needs to be fifty feet from wetlands. So on, on all four lots, there's no disturbance within fifty feet of, of any wetland. I'm just talking about the estate lot, but just.
And the other three lots are as of rate, right?
Yes.
Good job, John, I think it's placed very well, considering it's a workhorse.
Thank you.
Tough site to, to work, tough site to work.
Actually, but surprisingly, um, when I first got there, I was a little iffy, but it, they're very good soil, they have gravels and sands and two and three and four minute perk rates, so.
How long's the driveway?
I don't know, uh, four hundred feet or so? I live in a house that has a thousand foot driveway, so that's, that's nothing, yeah, I do.
I have a plow.
Somebody's gonna have a big plowing job, but. Okay, other questions from the board? John, you all set?
I am.
Am I right?
No questions.
Any reason we shouldn't close the hearing? Anyone in the audience care to comment or ask a question? Okay, um.
There is a draft decision.
There is a draft decision? Did you have?
Yep.
In the, in the pile, huh?
In the pile, um, it's there, take a look at it.
Okay.
As far as, uh, voting goes, in this case, Chad wouldn't be able to vote on this, 'cause he was, first hearing was.
Right.
Prior to the election, so the four of you.
Shout out.
Oh, one.
He can still be secretary.
Yeah, I have, I haven't done it yet.
Okay, let me know.
So this deci- this draft decision, uh, was available.
Well, we worked up between, well, Betsy actually worked it up between yesterday and today.
Yeah, okay.
Good afternoon. Now, you certainly, good vote to close the hearing and then look at this draft if you're not, wanna take a chance to take time to look at it, but, uh, we did, so condition number one, um, is in there, which refers back to lot four, which is on the A and R plan that was put up, should not be further subdivided.
Yep.
Rest of the standard conditions on the estate lot. And condition three actually incorporates the Conservation Commission, which refers back to the board.
Okay. All right, entertain a, um, motion to close the public hearing on, uh, one oh two Cleveland Street?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, the, uh, I think the decision, we need to review the decision to make sure that we're comfortable with it and then sign it and make it available to you, um, not necessarily this evening, but, uh, shortly thereafter. When it'll be available.
We have to vote on that.
Yeah, we have to vote on that.
It's the next meeting.
Pardon me?
So it'd be the next meeting.
Yeah, if you want to sign it the next meet, review and.
All right, review it.
What's that?
Understood.
Yeah, it's the next.
Okay, so we will review it and, and, uh, vote on it and make it available to you at the next meeting.
Okay, so.
The next meeting is July ninth.
Okay, and would you be signing the A and R plans this?
Between now and then, if, once, once we vote on the.
Okay.
Once we vote on.
I'll sign it in between.
Okay.
You can get that, uh, at the registry, right? At the deeds, registry of deeds.
Right, right, okay, all right, great, thank you.
Thank you. And good luck with your project.
Thank you.
All right, so we wanna go out of order and, uh, talk about, uh, Sandy Noel.
I don't have anything in front of me for Sandy Noel, do I?
You do.
No.
Do, huh?
I hope you do.
You go very last, uh, kind of the last thing you back it.
You're looking for bond release?
Reduction.
Reduction.
So we do, I wrote you earlier about there wasn't a bond reduction, but Phil in between, he had done it, so. Both were done, a punch list and a reduction.
All right, so this here is the, uh, the new numbers, Phil, the twenty-two thousand?
Yep.
What was the old bond?
Sixty thousand five hundred.
Generally, it just needs final cleaning up.
Okay.
We just, we, I think we should, I don't know if they, they've been providing, um, there's two conditions that say they gotta provide a report, maintenance report on the drainage system, May fifteenth, so.
Has any as built been done in this subdivision at all?
Yes.
Yeah, so there's some fin- minor comments relative to the asbells.
Okay, 'cause you're still withholding, excuse me, twenty-five hundred for asbells?
Yeah, 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 so I think they're just, it's, it's really just to give them incentive to get that done.
Okay, but you've already looked at the main part of the asbells?
Yeah.
Okay, good, thank you.
There is a dozen of these mains that look like, from the pictures.
Yeah, 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 the, you know, I don't know what, they got some subsurface structures too, so they gotta maintain those.
Yeah, okay.
There're gonna be problems.
Okay.
We did note that there's water in many of the structures, but it's been raining, well, prior to this, it'd be raining quite, quite often, right, up until Friday of last week?
Yeah. Should we hold and get the next, go back and look at it again?
What's that?
Maybe, so, maybe I would just take that under advisement and, and take action on it at the July meeting, so we can go back, so there was water, just double check the.
Water sitting in.
I think it just needs to be cleaned, so.
Yeah.
Once it, once it's clean, I think.
Yeah.
But I, I would also ask them for the maintenance records.
Are these the ones that go into the street, the front of the subdivision as you drive in?
They're on the, the right side.
As you drive in?
Yep.
Are those in a resource area?
No.
They're not, the ones on the other side?
So, there is a culvert up, up on the north side, I mean, uh, it's oriented, the road isn't, isn't north, south, or east, west, it's kinda.
So you're driving up on the left, there's a culvert?
Yes, right. And there's the basin just right there on the left, um, open basin, which.
Do you want to just double check that, water accumulation?
Yeah, I think what I'd like to do is get, reach, uh, the applicant, get the system cleaned up a little bit, and we can just let the board take it up at the next meeting in July.
And we typically ask for D, DPW to review the bond reductions as well.
Or the engineer.
The engineer.
But if that was, if those drainage structures were asbilled, I would assume then they're all at the right elevations, right?
I didn't check as, I didn't, oh, yeah, uh, yeah, we, we, yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Okay, that's why I asked if the asbilled portion was done, because if that was all proper elevations and the water being accumulated, probably just a clog or something.
Right, right.
Okay. Okay.
All right, so we'll take this under advisement and.
Yeah, we'll reach out to the, the, you know, the applicant.
Okay.
And, uh, we don't need a motion to do anything. All right, thank you, Phil.
And you, do you want me to stay for eighteen noon or, you can discuss that tonight?
Oh, yeah, um.
I can, I can stay.
All right. All right, all right.
What's next?
Eighteen noon, well.
Okay.
We'll take, we'll take it the.
Let's go to Norway Farms next.
Yep, and then we'll come back to eighteen noon.
All right. All right, so the next item is Norway Farms Open Space Preservation Development Request for Special Permit for Affordable Housing Development.
This is a public hearing, so you do need to read the.
Gary's on.
All right.
You gotta read the notice of public hearing.
Read the notice of public hearing.
First job is Doc Clark.
Who?
New clerk.
We'll close up on you, read the camera.
Notice is hereby given that in accordance with Mass General Law Section forty A and the Norfolk Zoning Bylaws H three C, that a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, June eleventh, two thousand nineteen, at seven forty in room one twenty-four at the Norfolk Town Hall, One Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass, regarding a special permit application for property located off Norway Farms Drive within the Norway Farms Open Space Preservation Subdivision in Norfolk, Mass, oh-two-oh-five-six. The applicant, Norway Farms Drive LLC of Norfolk, Mass, is requesting a special permit in order to comply with the Town of Norfolk zoning bylaws section, section H three, affordable housing development. The property is located in the R-one zoning district, reference assessor's map eight, block thirty-eight, lot thirty-four. The plan and application are available for public inspection in the office of the Norfolk Planning Board during the hours of nine AM to six PM, Monday through Thursday.
Thank you, Gary. Elizabeth, you're on.
Good evening, gentlemen, I see how you're doing. Thank you so much for having us, we're here to follow up on our special permit application under the brand-new bylaw and see if we can, uh, talk with you and work out, uh, a cash in lieu of payment, uh, in this particular project, which we feel is probably the perfect application for it. The, the, we are applying under section H three D one A three, uh, which is the cash in lieu of, uh, payment. We believe that this is a proper application in light of the, the interests of the town. I've reviewed and presented to you in the appendix of the special permit application, the master plan, and the more recent planning, uh, on behalf of the town regarding affordable housing, what the goals are, what they're looking for, what we're trying to achieve in Norfolk, and we have had previous discussions with the board and with Ms. Jacobson, that the houses in this particular subdivision, uh, are all going to be four bedrooms homes. Uh, they may be a bit too big, four thousand square feet, for an affordable housing applicant.
We have lowered them now to thirty-three, I thought that was a good move, Rob. So they're gonna be thirty-three hundred square feet.
Oh, they are now?
I think that was a good move, yeah. Anyways, I'm sorry about it. It never does, all right, you know.
News to me.
They're still big home.
Oh, yeah, they're still big homes, and we just feel that, uh, and, and as I understood from our last meeting with you, that, you know, we really can't ask for much more than you're getting probably for a three-bedroom, um, just because of the, of the, the requirements to qualify, uh, as an affordable housing applicant. So we feel, um, that the cash in lieu of proposal is something that, that might work very nicely here. And I know Ms. Jacobson had presented some, some figures at our last, uh, meeting together, and I did present to the board, uh, my, a letter, uh, with, with our proposal addressing Ms. Jacobson's, uh, presentation, and, uh, perhaps offering an alternative, um, that we can talk about for negotiating purposes. We feel that the funds requested by Ms. Jacobson are frankly a little bit high, uh, for the project. We feel that the, the bylaw clearly provides that you're supposed to reference the calendar year, uh, not a partial year, so we did in fact use those figures. We also felt that because a figure for a three-bedroom home was used, uh, we have four bedrooms homes, so that we think that number should be slightly higher. So what we've done is presented a proposal whereby we will pay three hundred thousand dollars to the Town of Norfolk, the Affordable Housing Trust, whatever entity, uh, is, is suggested by the board, uh, in lieu of the home. Ms. Jacobson also suggested or requested, uh, a, a down payment, a good faith deposit at the beginning. Rob has spent a lot of time with his accountant, and it is simply not feasible to come up with a big chunk of money until any of the homes are sold. Uh, as I mentioned before, I had looked at the Duxbury bylaw, which had a wonderful program for an installment plan. I believe our bylaw does in fact give this board the authority to, uh, to enter into an installment plan, uh, at your discretion, and we are actually looking for a down payment of ten thousand dollars, and then a, as our good faith deposit, that we feel that we can manage without strapping the budget. As I mentioned in my correspondence, we cannot use the bank loan, uh, for this payment, so we have to rely on cash in pocket, and right now, that is not substantial. So we'd like to offer a ten thousand dollar payment, and then a payment, uh, upon the sale of each home up through and including the sixth home. Now, again, our, uh, our approval letter and the bylaw does require the affordable home after the. after the fifth market rate home, but prior to the sixth, the sixth home being a, a market rate unit. The, the, the affordable home is to be at the fifth home before the sixth. So we're asking for just a little bit of a bump out there to make our last payment at the sale of the sixth home. We feel that this budget is very manageable, cash flow wise, and as, I mean, several of you well understand, at the beginning of a project, the cash flow is simply not there. So hopefully, you know, once the homes start to sell, then we can pay off in an installment basis and have the amount paid to the Town of Norfolk in full upon the sale of the sixth home. So we hope this will appeal to you, we hope that it works for you and for the Affordable Housing Trust. We think frankly it's a win-win situation for the developer and for the town, and I very much hope you'll favorably receive our, our proposal and allow the sum of three hundred thousand dollars to be paid to the town in lieu of the construction of a dwelling, on, on the payment and terms as expressed in my correspondence. Thank you.
I think the board would like to hear from Sue Jacobson at this point.
So I did, I did provide a full year's numbers for two thousand eighteen, and Elizabeth is correct that we did not have a full year, obviously, for two thousand nineteen. Our, our numbers are about seven or eight thousand dollars off, based on the number we had. But I did just wanna provide the board with some information that I, I did find this evening, and it's two, there's a home, a four bedroom detached, single family home with a two car garage, twenty-two hundred square feet in Medfield, that's currently going to go on the market for two twenty-eight, nine hundred. So we were, we were using a three bedroom number. However, in my opinion, they're having difficulty fulfilling these larger homes because the family's incomes can only be so high, and so they're not able to get mortgages.
Can, can we step back for a moment? One or two members on the board may be very familiar with the, with the calculations that you go through, but there may be other members who aren't, because they're brand new members, so it would, it would behoove you, I think, to take a moment and go through the formula and how you come up with the numbers that you come up with, so.
Okay.
If you would be so kind as to do that.
Certainly, so first things first, the state mandates the income levels that applicants have to be below to enter into one of the lotteries. The, to determine what a home can sell for, an affordable home can sell for, there's a calculator that the state allows us to plug in numbers, taxes, PMI, because they put very small down payments on these homes. And your number has to be seventy percent or less of the median monthly income, so that that leaves about thirty percent for a mortgage. So it's, it's a very, it's a tricky calculator, because you've gotta keep, get those numbers to match, and you're using these numbers knowing nothing about the applicants. We know that they have to be able to get a mortgage, so they're credit worthy, but we don't know their debt to income ratio. We don't know, do they have car payments? Do they, you know, what are their, what is their medical costs, what are their, you know? So it's very tricky, it's very tight, the numbers are very, very tight. We, we have a lottery, now, in Norfolk, when we run our own lotteries, if I, if this is approved, and I go out and look for an affordable home to purchase, the Affordable Housing Trust in this market will have to contribute some money towards a home, but that money will come back to the trust upon the sale of the home. But we, we go out and we keep our prices, if you, if you look at the history of the sale of our homes, they're significantly lower than what the developers who are developing the forty Bs here in town are pricing their homes at. And we do that for one very big reason. When I first started with the Affordable Housing Trust, John Whedleton was a member, and he ran an analysis showing an average family of four with, with the income that at that time they would be eligible to earn, and just backed out very small expenses, you know, living expenses. And he provided that to the trust and felt that we should keep our home prices below that, because you want this program to succeed, you want people to be successful in these homes, and you don't want them to lose their homes to auction. I'm happy to say that we've had eighteen homes in five or six years, and everyone is still in them. We've had one sale, but everyone has remained current and in their homes. So we, we price our prices a little bit lower. So it would have been unfair of me to take two thousand eighteen's numbers and to say, okay, the most expensive home we've sold is one eighty-five, and to ask the developer to pay that difference, because we make that decision to price that home. So what I did to determine the prices is I went out to forty B, the forty B market in Norfolk, and I looked at what they were selling three bedroom units for that aren't certainly going to have as large a piece of property as, as this home would be on. They're, they're much denser, so it's difficult to, you're not comparing apples to apples. So that's how I arrived at our figure. And, and that's exactly what will happen, if this is approved, the trust will take those funds, and we will go out and we will start to look for something that does not need a lot of work, because it's gonna put us into a different price range. We, we were buying homes in the two eighty, two ninety, three hundred thousand dollar range, and those days have disappeared, for now. So, you know, I'm thinking that we're probably gonna be looking at something at three ninety-nine, at four twenty-five, and, and those homes are significantly in better shape, in better condition typically. So it will allow the trust to add the home to these, to the housing inventory, ultimately completing what, what this would do if Mr. Kane were required to build a home in his development.
Would you, would you just go through the formula of how the three hundred thousand was arrived at?
Sure, so I took the median income for two, I provided two calculations. The first was the median income for two thousand nineteen, which is only half a year, and two thousand eighteen. And I took those sales figures and I backed out two hundred and forty-eight thousand, because that is what the units on Lakeland Farm, the three bedroom units are going for. And that left me with a price of three oh six nine twenty-five for two thousand eighteen's figures, and a price for three twenty-seven if, for two thousand nineteen's figures. But we don't have a full year for two thousand nineteen. And that's how I arrived at the three oh six nine twenty-five and the three twenty-seven.
All right, is, is the Affordable Housing Trust comfortable with a, a routed number to three hundred thousand?
I did speak to the chair, I sent the chair the same information that the board was sent, my memo and Elizabeth's memo, and they are, they are okay with that.
Thank you. Questions from the board members?
Still have a few questions. I'm trying to think how to phrase them, so it might take me a minute to get through it.
That's okay.
I, I think I understand how we arrived at the three hundred, three hundred and six thousand dollar number. My question is, the logic behind that decision. So if developments as we progress through town are required to have a certain percentage of the development be there, and if these units were to be built in that development, they would be built at what is significantly higher priced than the three hundred thousand dollar unit. So if we weren't to accept the payment in lieu, and this house was to be built in the development, it would come at a significantly increased cost from above and beyond the three hundred thousand dollars. Not only that, because we're not requiring the house in the development, there's another lot in the development that's being sold at market rate. So I'm curious why we aren't asking for a larger contribution, which would be more aligned with a house that would be put in the development?
Well, the, the affordable home, if built in the development, is, is, in my opinion, two forty-eight is the highest they're gonna be able to get for that house. I don't know what Mr. Kane's costs are, I know he owns the land, but it's gonna cost him, I think, probably more than that to build the house in the development.
Understood, and I think my question isn't, it's not what the house could sell for, it's what the town bylaws require, right? The town bylaws require this development, and it would cost this much money. So if we, from what I understand, we're essentially setting a precedent here, this is the first time we've done this, we're essentially saying, well, you don't have to spend, just for the sake of conversation, six hundred thousand dollars, we're allowing you to spend three hundred thousand dollars to meet this requirement. Why wouldn't every developer come to us and request a payment in lieu instead of paying six hundred thousand dollars to meet each affordable unit development in their developments?
They would.
They would. And, and I will tell you that this is, I mean, Rich and I spent some time on this, and we looked at some other towns like Duxbury and Plymouth and, and some other information on, on getting calculations. We didn't just decide on, kind of on our own that we're gonna put it together like this. Really, what, what we figured out is that although our inclusionary bylaw is terrific, if you build, you know, for every ten homes you build in a development, the town wants to see one affordable home. But what we have learned, and what many communities have learned, is that that, that realistically, for an affordable buyer, doesn't work. To put them in, you know, in a thirty-four hundred square foot home, and to have them have to maintain that home, heat that home, provide electricity and lights, you know, for a family of four on ninety thousand dollars a year, it, it just isn't feasible. So we have to kind of look at a formula, and this is what's being used across, across many communities.
So, let's move beyond one home. What if we asked for six hundred thousand instead of three hundred thousand, and we use that to purchase two homes?
So you certainly, you could, you could ask for six hundred thousand dollars. I, I think if you ask for six hundred thousand dollars for one home, the developer's going to say he'll build the home. And I think we would have a very difficult time putting a family in it based on, again, the numbers, what their, what their ceiling is, what their cap is, and, and them being able to maintain that home. So I think that it would not, we would not be sending them in with, with a good foundation. A beautiful home, a gorgeous, brand new home, but something that is gonna be very difficult for them to maintain.
Yeah, I, I think the intent was just to provide a number, the intent in the bylaws, however it's written, is, is to provide a number of options to create the same scenario. So if ten houses are built, there are other ways of meeting the ratio for affordable housing in the town. And in my development, they chose a third option, which was to find and build in different locations around the town, so I think.
We go to six houses?
Right.
I guess as long as it's satisfying the ratio, which is the intent of, right, building space. So there's just different ways of solving that.
Well, yeah, Aaron's, Aaron's on the right path. For all of, for all of the mathematical calculations, this is totally subjective. I can show a way that Rob can, can give us the three hundred thousand and make fifty percent return on his money. We're getting the money and, and, there's no time date on this, which I wanna put in if we go this way, but our, you know, six houses down the road, four years, you can't buy an affordable house right now for three. In three years, you're gonna buy one for four fifty, you have to fix it up, and there's gonna be major upkeep costs for a house. You know, he's getting a lot there, and the lot may be worth three hundred thousand, he's gonna build a house, and he could make an extra two hundred thousand on the house, so, but he also could lose money on the house. And he also could build a house now that he's going for thirty-three hundred square feet, he could build a house for twenty-six hundred square feet. And it probably will look the same for the street. And that house for twenty-six hundred feet could end up costing him three hundred and thirty, three hundred and forty thousand. So this is stretched so many ways, it's almost like, and, and, you know, I sort of gave up when Elizabeth gave me the, the dictionary of the calendar year, I said, well, I surrender. My, my position is I would like to do it the way that keeps him going, that makes him comfortable, because we're gonna get our, we're gonna get our lot, and in theory, somebody living with houses selling for eight hundred is gonna be comfortable with their house costing two fifty. And you got a longtime resident of the town who's developing his own piece of land, and he's off for an adventure as he goes through this fourteen lot development, and who knows what's to come down the road. Prices could end up staggering down, so there's so many unknowns here. You're never gonna be able to quantify from any formulas or any projected cost or any timeframe whether this is right. You're gonna go by a gut feeling on what you wanna do, and whether you wanna just hold this till it's right by the book, and you build it, you sell it, bring a family in, or try to work something different. But if our municipal folks that are doing the housing feel comfortable that this will help them, and this will get them a home where an affordable family will feel more comfortable in their surroundings, then that's sort of why I think we have them performing each month. So I sort of acquiesce to them, but.
Could I add something else?
Sure.
My name's Rob Kane. So as mentioned, we've lived in town for an awful long time, and this bylaw's been around for a bit, maybe since two thousand four, two thousand six. And I know the economy wasn't the greatest and on, but there's also been a lot of subdivisions that probably had the potential of ten homes, eleven homes, twelve homes, and the developers, because of this bylaw, have purposely chosen to build nine lot subdivisions to not have to provide the town for an affordable home. So you've lost out on a lot of affordable homes, and by having this bylaw in here, people that have ten and eleven lots, you could very well find them building out those lots, which would not only increase your real estate tax base, but would also help Sue get more money in the future, rather than just walking off and, and leaving the two, three lots behind. If that, if you follow me.
All right, so I have, I have just one more question. I don't, I understand what everybody's saying, I agree with all of it, but I still, I'm not making my point. My point is, is that the payment in lieu is not the production of an affordable house. It's a payment in lieu of producing an affordable house. Therefore, the payment in lieu isn't necessarily connected to what it would cost to buy or build an affordable house. The payment in lieu could be four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it could be five hundred thousand dollars, it could be six hundred thousand dollars, right? And the trusts could do what they want with that money for whatever means. If the house ends up costing five hundred thousand instead of three hundred thousand, or they buy, you know, a, a house for four hundred thousand and use two hundred thousand for the contribution to another house to, to pad their funds and, and the development of further funds in town. So my point is, is I, I understand how we've tied this number to the development. I'm just concerned that it's a low number, that it's setting a precedent, and that going forward, we all have to be confident that we've done what's in the best interest of the town and the trust.
Sue, is, is the formula which generated that three hundred thousand dollar number a local formula or a state formula?
So Rich and I went to other towns, because everybody's a little bit different. If it's a large project, you know, I saw some for three hundred, you know, unit apartment buildings where the developer wanted to buy out the, the affordable units, it's significantly higher numbers. So it's, it's very difficult to quantify, you know, that it's a specific formula, because it's, it's different for every town. But what Rich and I did was took a look at some similar towns and some towns that have had some success with payment in lieu of. The only other thing that I, I would add, I, I hear exactly what you're saying, Aaron, and don't disagree, but the proceeds of the sale of this home come back to the Affordable Housing Trust. If, if the home is built in the development, the proceeds go back to the developer. So, you know, we're getting three hundred thousand, now say, say we have to put in, just to use fake numbers, but say we buy a home for four hundred, and we sell that home in a good market for two hundred, now that the market's up. We're getting a hundred thousand dollars, so we, that payment in lieu of that we got for three hundred, we put in a hundred, but we got two hundred, so there's another hundred thousand dollars coming back to the trust. So that, again, could, could go towards, you know, another home that, that we purchase. But it is extremely difficult, you're absolutely right, it is extremely difficult to quantify what the right number is. what the right number is. As John said, we, we don't have a crystal ball. The, the housing market could continue to stay strong and, and maybe with a full year of two thousand and nineteen, maybe we would, we would definitely see a higher number that we would be looking for. The market could, in a, in a year's time, be significantly lower, and the forty B prices will be significantly lower. So it, it's really a very difficult thing to quantify.
I think the, the one thing, I don't know if we, actually, we didn't get to touch on it because the end-up withdrawn was the Cranberry Heights. But as we, towards the end, we started talking about the affordable house and, and the units. And then, what Sue had learned from some of the workshops, that the idea of what we have in the bylaw of doing that two-family, they're probably not going to approve our, our two-family that we had in the bylaw.
State.
The state wouldn't give us, because the state gets involved with acceptance of the unit as far as adding to our inventory. So, and one of the, kind of opened up, there was kind of that doorway into, when we're dealing with the inclusiveness of the bylaw, is that incorporating, integrating them into that neighborhood. So the, as you well know, the homes in the new developments in Norfolk aren't closer to, were the affordable lots. I mean, if you're in a community where the new developments in the houses are, you know, the price point is a little bit closer, putting them in that neighborhood is, is a lot different feel than the higher-priced neighborhoods. So, there's a little bit, you know, not no dollars and cents to this. It's more the, kind of the holistic approach of putting a, a family who is affordable and they're trying to get their leg into the community and integrate. You, you put them into a, a neighborhood that's seven hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand, and, you know, I don't know about you, but I'm not extremely wealthy. So having those conversations about the kids who are, you know, jetting off here and have the cars there and all that becomes a challenge, because there's that dissimilarity from, you know, people you're around. So, we kind of, we've been trying to look at that, too, to kind of, you know, with a forty B development, the design, they integrate much better because developer has to look at the entire subdivision, how they design and integrate things together. So it just blends in. Well, a sharp eye can kind of figure it out, but for the most part, you really, most people get into their private business, you don't really know.
And to kind of jump in on that, in a, in a twelve-unit subdivision, everybody knows which, what the affordable house is. It, it can look exactly the same. Every neighbor in there is going to know that they paid eight and that person paid two fifty. If you look, other than the Gumps Farm Development, if, if you, I would, I would say to everybody, you know, you, we have fifteen other homes in town, and most people don't have any idea where they are. And that's really what you want. You don't want somebody, you know, to say, oh, that's the affordable house, you know, those, those people. And, and, you know, listen, an eight hundred thousand dollar home comes with a hefty tax rate. And you're living in a twelve-unit subdivision, and your taxes are twenty thousand dollars, and the affordable people's taxes are three thousand dollars.
Let me be clear. I'm not advocating that the unit be built in the neighborhood and by any way should perform. I'm simply stating that I think the three hundred thousand dollars is a low number.
No, the point's taken, and then so the kind of counterbalance is, is coming up with some number to not have them go the op, it, it's kind of a check and balance. Like, we, you have a number so high in payment lieu that they don't do that, they go the other way, and so.
But are we ever at risk of not being able to meet the ratio that we have to, that we would have met automatically by requiring it inside the subdivision by taking the payment in lieu? Is there a chance that we would not meet the ratio? I think that's the-
Well, I think there's, I think, you know, certainly if Mr. Kane were to run into financial trouble before this payment schedule was met, then we would not receive all of the funding.
But if Mr. Kane were into financial trouble, he's going to build five houses before we get the affordable in the sixth. So the quantifying question is, we're going to have an affordable house for the town when he's built five homes. Are we going to have an affordable house for the town when he's built five homes? So I look at you and say, you're going to have, after the fifth, fifth home, three hundred thousand dollars. You're going to be able to produce affordable house for us then or before then?
Yes.
Okay.
Because the trust is funded right now, that we, but we would be able to meet that time schedule. And we, we may be waiting for that last payment piece to come in, but that wouldn't prohibit us from being able to provide an affordable home.
John, you mentioned earlier something about a, a timing issue that you wanted to discuss.
Not to forecast gloom, but the contract should have a timeframe on it. We should have a six-house sale, that should be substituted in there with some language to protect the town. For example, a date for that's done. Unfortunately, if Rob ever ran out of business and there was four houses sold and two left, and it goes to auction and blah, 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 we could be years and somebody else comes in and works around. So we could possibly lose out on our money. So, we just need some language in there, starting with a time date on when this is going to be done. And after that, assuming that this runs off a lot longer and this thing is in limbo, like a lot of subdivisions, for five years or so, we want to make sure that the person that steps up after that gives us everything owed plus interest, just to protect the town.
Mr. Wellington, your point is well-taken. What I might suggest to you, to give the, the town some security, and I have not discussed this obviously with Rob, because it wasn't a consideration until you just raised it, but to ensure the town does have security, might the town consider a, a mortgage on one of the lots? That no matter what happens with the subdivision, that lot can't be sold until the balance of what is owed to the town-
I was speaking generally, Elizabeth, as long as we have protection-
I know, you need security.
If we have a mortgage on there and the timeframe works out, we want the right to just foreclose in that mortgage and take it right away, not to wait. If, if somebody's paying along the schedule and it's been six, seven years from now, we want the right to, you know, recover that mortgage and take it over. And that language you folks could, Rich can work out with Town Council and you, but as long as there's a, a protection that we're going to get this money in three years, that's the main thing. And hopefully it'll be before that, because you're going to build them and sell them more quickly.
I hope so also.
Me too.
I, I think a three-year timeframe would be pretty generous.
Yeah.
I would be fine with that. Yeah.
Since two are already up right now.
And if, if I could just address briefly Mr. Hunt's points, your, your points are very well taken, I understand. But looking at it from, from my technical lawyerly point of view, like my definition of calendar year and such, I look strictly at the bylaw. The bylaw has the language in there that suggests the formula. The planning board does, in fact, have latitude and discretion, but the, the, it is referenced where you're supposed to get these numbers, how you're supposed to come up with these numbers. No one just pulled them out of the sky. And for example, we had an informal meeting, and I had gone through, I have not done nearly the research, I'm sure that Rich and Sue have, but I did a fair amount, because I've, I've never worked with the bylaw like this before. And it was frankly quite, quite overwhelming, to be frank. But looking at the resources available, citing the sources referenced in our bylaw, the number I came up with was substantially lower than the number Sue came up with. And the reason for that is using sheer calculations as to, for example, the latter part of it, you know, what a qualified purchaser can pay. According to my calculations, for a four-bedroom unit, they would be paying well into the three hundreds. However, the reality is, that, that's just using numbers. What I failed to understand or appreciate, which Sue has the practical application for, I do not, was that, yes, the numbers qualify and we could get substantially more money, but the town of Norfolk has decided to use substantially lower numbers, because you're not, it's going to be a very difficult task to find qualified applicants for the number that the, the, the calculation justifies. It's not practical, because even though the calculation works out that they would be paying like three seventy, something like that, getting a qualified buyer to pay that is highly unlikely. So, that was a real learning curve for me. I thought you'd just plug it into the formula, here's your number. But the town of Norfolk, in its generosity, has decided to use a lower number. So if it makes you feel any better, I frankly came into this thinking that the number was going to be substantially lower. So, coming up to this number has sort of been a rude awakening for me. But I understand and I appreciate it, and I frankly think it's fair. I think it's a fair number. The only thing that is somewhat sensitive is working out the installments, that it's not going to strap, you know, a brand-new developer who's not a big commercial developer to come up with this kind of cash, you know, in one lump sum. If we can work that out, in my opinion, for what it's worth, it's a win-win for the town and for the developer. So if, I'll be very happy to speak with the Town Council. Maybe he will suggest a security instrument, whether it's a mortgage and a lot or whatever, that would satisfy the town to make sure that no matter where we are in this payment schedule, you have the right to collect the rest of your money. And perhaps at a certain time, interest would accrue, something of that nature. I, I think that might be something we could, we could work out with Town Council. I guess that the real question is, are these amounts on the installment basis something the town would consider in the amounts and along this timing with a cap, a, a year cap? As to if this isn't done, say, by year three, then it's due anyway? Otherwise, does this work for you?
I like it. Yeah, I'm comfortable with it. Sue's, Sue's nodding her head.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to point one thing out. Although the town of Norfolk has been generous in the homes that we've been buying, the material that I pulled from Canton and Medfield, they do show, you know, it's, it's, the pricing is done based on the income levels people can have. You know, they do have a four, again, a four-bedroom unit in Medfield, a standalone home, twenty-two hundred square feet that they're lotterying off for two forty-one five. And they have in Canton, a four-bedroom, a single-family home that they're lotterying off at two thirty-five hundred. So, it's, it's what you have to do to get qualified buyers. It, it's really not, you know, the, the other homes that we've bought were lower, but if you look at other communities, everybody's prices are in the same boat, because they, they won't get qualified buyers. I just wanted to make that clarification, that it isn't just Norfolk.
Right. Any further questions from board members? Any questions from members of the audience? And we should take a motion to continue this until the next meeting, which town, we should review what, the fruits of the conversation between yourselves and Town Council and come back with the severity attached to this schedule. I think the schedule is acceptable based on what I've heard and nods around the, around the table here. And we'll discuss it and close on it, hopefully, at the next meeting on July ninth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could just ask, Rich, if, if you could just give a heads up to Town Council, I don't know if it'd be Mr. DeLuca I'm dealing with or Breann, just so that when I do call, they'll-
Sure.
And, and I do have the authority to call and work with directly Town Council, yes.
So, we need a motion to continue this to the, this public hearing for special permit for affordable housing development until seven-
Ten.
Ten, right?
So I'll move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Elizabeth, thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Susan.
Okay, so Rich, you're recommending the, the sequence here, what's next?
Eighteen Union Street.
Eighteen Union Street, okay. Discuss modification, eighteen Union Street approved site plan. What do we got?
Yeah, there's a site plan modification PowerPoint. So, Mr. Chairman-
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Members of the board, eighteen Union Street's right next door, on the corner here.
Yeah.
The mixed-use building that's going in.
Yeah.
It was, I think the-
Oh, it doesn't have a Liberty Lane address, eh? It's got a Union Street address, okay.
Yeah, it has a Union Street address.
Now I know why you're here.
Yeah.
So I see a red circle.
So anyway, this is actually part of my, I was back a little bit, my first meeting here in the town, and the first town meeting, there was, if you remember, there was a proposal before town meeting for an alternate access between Town Hall and eighteen Union Street. And the proposal wasn't, was voted down at town meeting. So Mr. DePlacido came at the alternate, and before the planning board, he preferred the alternate version, but it didn't succeed at town meeting.
Yeah.
So now he's in the final stages of completing next door. And, and Phil had pointed this out a while ago, that's why he's here, just for history. The stairs that are shown are on the town's property with inside that red circle. If you recall, and then you'll see there's, there's a walkway, sidewalk going up, the, the loop, the half-circle in front of Town Hall. Well, Bob Bullock had discussions with the Architectural Access Board, and the challenge and the problem here would be if those stairs go in, we need to have a ramp from our site down to eighteen Union Street.
To comply with ADA?
To comply with ADA. So what, the alternative proposal was really to eliminate the stairs. And then, yeah, the next. So if you-
Bigger.
-look on the screen.
Can you make that bigger, Betsy?
The mic. The, so in the plan-
Put the site in beard.
So the plan that, this is the plan of record that the planning board approved at the time, so the sidewalk comes up, kind of loops around, and actually bypasses the crosswalk here out front, and then was tying back into the sidewalk, which I suppose made sense at the time, but in retrospect, what they like to do now is just take the sidewalk, bring it up and tie into the sidewalk that's there, the crosswalk that's there, if you look at it, and I have a photo of it, if you want to go scroll through down to this slide here. Not one more. There's disrepair.
Yep.
And so what Mr. DePlacido, in discussions with Bob McGee, would do is he would rebuild this crosswalk to match the cobble crosswalk that we have in the rest of, in downtown. So it would be uniform. And then, of course, is the, it's a Verizon box, right? You got to adjust it. But I think maybe you were trying to avoid that box before or something?
I don't know, but anyway.
Yes. But-
They were trying to avoid the box.
Yeah, well, so now the box has got a lower, right? Yeah, if you don't mind, Sean.
Good, good evening, Tom DePlacido, DePlacido Development Corp. And we're proceeding next door with a lot of the exterior work on the outside of the building sidewalks and, and starting to prep a little bit for landscaping and things. And these sidewalks here, we replaced some of the sidewalks that are on Liberty Lane. And as we started doing this, I, I called the DPW to talk to the director, Mr. McGee, and tell him what we were doing and things. And he had concern about the stairs, also the sidewalk that was proposed to go up to the stairs, it really doesn't lead anywhere, it just sort of comes up and ties into a gravel pathway over here. It's awful steep, wouldn't look that attractive coming up in that location at Town Hall when you see it from Liberty Lane. And he just was under the impression it's another maintenance issue for him, under the DPW. And he looked at this and, and he said, what we could really use is some of the infrastructure that we have that's falling apart out here, or doesn't meet ADA compliance to be improved upon. And he suggested that if I was willing to replace the, the crosswalk that's out here and do that in lieu of putting the stairs in and extending the sidewalk that way. So actually replacing this, making it look like the rest of the cobblestone that's been replaced throughout the center, and then integrating into the existing sidewalk path. Also down in the intersection by the rotary, there's another crosswalk that's down there, and the handicap concrete ramps that are there to it, removing- removing them because they quite don't, they don't have all the ADA compliance, yellow matting and proper grades and stuff, and actually bring that up into compliance at the same time, too. So actually solving a couple of existing infrastructure concerns for the town instead of leaving them there and adding more infrastructure and more maintenance. And that was his suggestion, and that's why we're here tonight.
What was the intent of the original stairway going up to the gravel path? Was it to try and connect the, the site to the Town Hall?
It, it was actually to try to do this here, but, and I think that idea came from Walgreens next door, which has much higher wall and things here. But actually, where this staircase was going to go, and if you went over next door, it's really not that much different just having the sidewalk, you know, if I'm out this way, go right across.
It was also part of a, of a plan that had a connection to the driveway, which got, as Rich said, got voted down at town meeting. We, we approved a plan with two alternative, which we had never done before. I was on the board. Two alternative driveway connections. And the one that had the connection to the Town Hall driveway got voted down, and so it was just the one out to Liberty Lane that was accepted. And the stairs kind of left there as part of the plan when the driveway was, connection was eliminated.
Another one, I guess the one thing I really didn't think about as much as we're out there, the landscaping, is that, it's quite a bit landscaping there on the town property, so... Depends on the... Talk about that at all? You could still plant that or modify the plants or...
I mean, we could still do that planting there. Then we talked about actually maybe shifting a little bit of that planting up near the transformer that's on the corner to sort of beautify that a little bit. And, but yeah, we would not be looking to remove any plants or anything like that, just the stairs.
I think, I mean, I think overall, it's kind of the, the concept, you know, executed made sense, but if you look at, if you go up the third slide... No, well, I'm sorry, third slide. Doesn't do it, it's hard to see from the picture, but, I mean, where those stairs would go in relation to where the sidewalk is, is, I don't know, sixty feet, fifty feet, I mean, it's really...
It's really not even that far, I don't think it's...
I think as Walter mentioned, the stairs are vestige of other plans.
Yeah.
Can we trade the stair for a tree?
Actually, I mean, I was gonna put the landscaping there and things, and I think there's some larger trees proposed in that area already. And what we're doing is rebuilding the crosswalk and fixing the other crosswalk up in the center, so... It's hoping that it's a, it's a win-win for the town and stuff both ways, however it goes.
Are you planning on leaving the parking as is? Because right now you have that blocked off for access to go up the stairs.
I think if you, if you look at that, either side of that, it was located, so those are handicap parking spaces, so that would be a van-loading area.
Right.
So it was gonna, so that, those would all stay just the same way.
So right now you're just proposing eliminating the stairs and then doing those other, like you said, those other improvements that are deficient?
That's correct, sort of improve what's already existing instead of adding more.
All right, so we need to treat this as a minor modification to the plan, I believe, right?
Yes.
Okay. So we need to, first of all, vote to make it a minor modification, and then second, vote to accept the alternative, correct?
Correct, and then we will list out those alternatives within the decision.
All right, so I, Chair would like to entertain a motion to consider this a minor modification of the plan for, site plan for eighteen Union Street. So moved. Second, all right? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so now that we've decided it's a minor modification, we need to approve the minor modification. So we need a motion to approve the changes to the plan as presented, to eliminate the stairs and continue with the plannings and as Tom has said... Install the cobblestone. All the cobblestone crosswalks, et cetera. And Rich will make sure that the language of the motion is complete. So, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Tom, thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Yep.
All right, so eighteen Union Street, all right, where are we here?
Now we're back up to appointments.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Sauv.
So we, just kind of update from, as you know, we had the special planning board meeting last Tuesday, June fourth. Since that time, I did forward, I believe, an email that Mr. Rosano had...
Where are you going?
Bristol Pond.
Oh, you're gonna do Bristol Pond, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
Sorry, I thought you were doing something else, go ahead.
No, sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
A, an email with a copy of a check to Island Power and Light
Yeah.
for purchasing of the, the streetlights for the development. And then in between, Attorney Mayland asked me to give consideration of maybe some landscape architects that we've used or maybe have, we could look for.
Yeah.
Kind of specialty would be in planting, naturalizing areas and consideration of, you know, be receptive to areas that won't be well-watered but provide good landscape, landscape value to the neighborhood. So I do, we, we are having a smart landscaping workshop, June twentieth. And we do have a landscape ar...
Twentieth?
June twentieth. It's a little bit lower on the agenda, but, well, actually, you don't see, but it's there.
Yeah, I don't see that.
You don't see it, but it's there. I was gonna talk about it, anyway. So, we have unintended business, unanticipated business, anyway. So we have engaged through the Charles River Watershed Association, a landscape architect to have a workshop for residents to talk about, you know, smart landscape design that is more workable without having to irrigate a lot. So, in any event, having said all that, need to kind of sync up unless you're aware of landscape architects that kind of specialize in. So we could sit down with Mr. Rosano and then a few, maybe two, maybe three representatives from the neighborhood.
I think any registered landscape architect could come up with that perfectly, that's what they do. Could be shade areas, sun, doesn't matter.
Think so?
I know so, although it don't.
They're not all the same, but anyway, that's, if you...
Pretty hefty degree.
No, I know, but some are, well, anyway, we'll get one, how's that?
Good evening again, I know you're really getting sick of seeing me, I'm sorry. Elizabeth Mayland for Bristol Ponds. And I need to apologize to you on behalf of Mr. Rosano. He had a work emergency at the Cape, he said he would try to get here if he could, but he thought it was unlikely. But I sort of felt things were sort of under control, so I told him not to worry. I got it, and I hope that was okay. And also, just to sort of bring you up to date on the status of what's going on. First of all, I want to thank you all very, very much for the special meeting. I think we've made a lot of progress since our initial meeting, and I think things are going ever so much better. The sale that was contemplated for the past Friday did not happen. And the reason it didn't happen, again, I've got to take responsibility for this, I had insisted that Mr. Rosano tell the buyer the problem with the lot. And I just, I'm just not one to wait till the last minute to tell someone, "Don't bother showing up for the closing, we can't sell." So, of course, he's sort of slowed down, he's working with, I think his bank is requiring him to have his building permit in hand, and he just sort of, you know, laid off the gas, and then everything had to start back up again. So there's a new closing date, I believe it's July seventh. But Mike is very confident that's going to happen. And in light of that, he has gone ahead and signed the contract. They just, Island Lighting required payment in advance, he paid for that. He's also proceeded with everything else that we talked about to put everything in the works to get things done. And I think you're going to be pleased to see that it is, it is coming to fruition. I have heard back from one resident that I initially heard from after my letter, the same gentleman who was very lovely, he had been away and they had an illness in the family, but he said, "Give him some more time and then he'll sit down and talk with us." So, we're, we're amenable, and we will remain amenable to doing that and working it out with them. So I think we're in very good shape, I think we're moving along. And the reason I had asked, Rich, if maybe you knew, because I believe, Mr. Weddleton, you had mentioned, you would be looking for some drought-resistant, some specific type of plantings in lieu of that open space. And I thought maybe with all the landscape architects you all see here, you might be, have worked with one, that you were very comfortable with their work, they knew exactly what you wanted, rather than us reinventing the wheel. Obviously, Mr. Rosano works with a landscape landscaper, but I don't know that he's an architect and will know exactly the type of plantings that you want. So, that's why I was asking. And did I hear you say, Rich, that, that this seminar is for residents?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Do you have a time for that, what time is it?
It's seven PM, June twentieth.
All right, so we might learn something there. But he is more than happy to talk with somebody, come up with a plan, to present to the board, to see if that would work in lieu of that open space that's going to be a real tough maintenance issue. So, if I can address anything else, any questions you might have, I'd be very happy to.
So you had sent a letter out to all of residents?
I did.
And I, I thought previously you said you heard back from two residents
I did.
At the last meeting. And is this a third resident or...
No, this is one of the two.
It's one of the two.
One of the two, came back to me, because I never heard from him. He'd asked for the plan, I sent him the plan, and then I never heard from him. And then he came, came back to me, was it today or yesterday? My days are running together, apologized, they had sick children, and they'd been out of Massachusetts for a while. But he said, "I'm back in town, I'm going to get on, I'll be back in touch with you." So I acknowledged it, I said, "At your pleasure." I said, you know, "We're not planning on doing any serious planting until the fall, so there's really no mad dash, but we certainly will be happy to sit down and talk with you." But that's it, I've heard from two, one of those two twice.
I've driven through there recently, and the, the loam and seeding of the grass strips is done, and it looks good, and hopefully gets watered through the rainstorms and the grass grows. And the plantings of the islands look good, so progress has been made on them. Island lighting check has been signed, that's terrific. I think, as you say, I think we're making progress.
And I had asked him also to get in touch with his engineer to give them the heads-up that it's time to start working on the running descriptions, the meets and bounds, the finalization for street acceptance by the town. I'm sure they're straight out right now this time of year, but it is in the works. And he has his punch list to work on things, and I think things are going quite well. I hope the residents are feeling some comfort that things are moving along.
Thank you, any further questions from the board?
Nope.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, finally we get to Mr. Sauv. We are in receipt of your request for committee appointment. Why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself and, and why you'd like to be an associate member?
Hi, everyone. Is it on?
You probably won't hear it, but it records, as long as the green light's on.
Okay, great. My name's Peter Schwalbe, thank you for accepting my application. So I guess a little bit about myself personally. My wife and I have lived in Massachusetts for the past eight years, we have two...
I'm sorry, excuse me, can I just scoot out? I'm not skidding anymore to go through these chairs
Oh, sure.
Before he starts his presentation.
Sure.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Good night.
So, we have two young children that are about to enter. My, my eldest is about to enter H. all of day, my other's about to enter preschool. We've been in Norfolk going on four years now. We live at fifty-eight Everett Street, so in what's kind of called part of Pondville. We've been in Massachusetts for eight years. Prior to that, Chicago, my wife is from Chicago, I'm from the West Coast, from Southern California. And my background, I've, I studied a great deal in-depth in music. I did graduate studies in classical piano. But professionally now do something completely different. So, I work for a company called Publicis Sapient, it's a global marketing and technology consultancy. I'm a program manager, so I work closely with clients on large-scale IT roadmaps. And primarily, two areas I'm focused right now, actually, industry-wise, are in healthcare. And I have another client that's in retail. So, two very different types of industries using technology in very similar ways. Or hoping to. So, little, that's a little bit about myself. In terms of Norfolk, my time here, I've, I've had the opportunity to help moderate the community Facebook page. It's a bit of a Wild West, but we try our best to make it a very positive place and keep it, keep the information accurate as possible and keep the discussion as neighborly as possible. So it's been a great introduction for me to be able to meet a lot of folks in, in the town. We've really come to love living here and, you know, are looking forward to seeing our children grow through the school system and make friends here in Norfolk. I've also been, I have taken part in other efforts within the communities such as the Complete Streets Program that Rich headed up, the Economic Development Workshops. And also personally myself, I've taken interest in the area of Pondville and, and what could possibly be an interesting rail trail. And been working and attending CPC meetings regularly to, you know, help foster the possibility that that could become a reality for that area of Norfolk, so... My interest in planning board, I think it, it just really is the subject matter. My hope is to volunteer and, and help contribute positively to the, to the board and, and to the town as it grows. Obviously, we have a lot of growth, increase in population, and balancing, you know, community needs, business needs. It's, it's a very interesting, complex problem to solve on a week-by-week basis or month-by-month basis as these meetings happen, so... I don't have a great background in planning or construction development, but I, I do have an interest and willingness to learn, so... That's, that's my pitch to you.
Thank you. Questions from our board members?
Thank you for your desire to participate in the town. I don't have a lot of deep questions, other than to say that I was like you last May, I think it was. And I sat there talking to the board, and I, I was the associate for, for about six months, and I just ran unopposed because of such a high interest in joining the planning board, as Chad ran unopposed as well, which neither one of us really understand. And I think Walter ran unopposed, three, three out of five, five members ran unopposed.
Everybody wants it.
So you have a long future in the planning board.
It's the, it's the pay, that's, that's the... We get time and a half after nine-thirty.
After six months, you get to be the clerk.
That's right.
Well, I too will echo the, the thank you note. It's hard to get people to volunteer in these, these boards and committees. And the town needs that in order to function, so thank you very much for volunteering. Yes. Appreciate that. Now procedurally, Rich, do we need to make this a joint appointment with the selectmen?
No, it's just a, it's the planning board.
Just a planning board appointment?
Let me double-check, hold on.
It's joint.
It's a joint?
Yeah, I think I, I just met with them quickly.
You can join, I think we have to recommend.
We both vote.
All right, let's stay corrected.
Okay. So, any further questions from board members? Let's vote him in before he changes. Yeah, I know.
Don't let him get away.
Close that door quick, will you? All right, so I need a motion, please, gentlemen. I'll vote to appoint Peter Schwalbe, is that how you pronounce it, Peter? As our associate member for one-year term ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We got him. There you go. Welcome aboard, and Betsy can, can help you with some of the documentation that you'll need to... Rich can get him on the selectmen's agenda for the next meeting.
Yes, I'll ask to have him for the twenty-fifth. Of June, are you around June 25th?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then after that, you need to go and see the town clerk and swear in. So, you could actually be at our next meeting in July, if you're around.
Yeah, next July is so unfortunate. This sounds terrible, but I'll be out of town.
That's fine.
Unfortunately.
That's fine.
But I'm around the rest of the town.
Great. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Peter. It's getting late. You're getting hot. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. What do we got next? Toils Inn Farm Fox Run, request for updating the...
Yeah, so it's just kind of a standing item on the agenda at the moment. They haven't, we've been with them a while.
Yeah.
Several months ago to get back on essentially swapping a bond.
Two bonds.
Two bonds for...
A new one.
A new one. And their council hasn't, really hasn't gotten back to us. I've called and emailed a few times. I guess it's not as pressing as... The photo was a while ago.
Let's see. Which way do the numbers work? The two bonds versus the new bond? Were the two bonds in excess of the new bond?
I think so a little bit.
I think so.
It was, yeah.
Yeah. So, there's an incentive in a way to get the new number in place, right? It reduces their bond.
Was there some terms on the new bond that were preferable to them as well?
No, they had to wait five years before the roads...
Yeah, so this was actually a bond to be in place to get, all right, to be able to get everything accepted by the town, but still have it in place. The road was...
When was the last time you communicated with them?
I think two days ago.
That's pretty recent. You talked to John?
I emailed Mark, because Mark's the one that's, but he's on there. I mean, I've...
Okay, good.
Yeah, so he's in the loop. So, I do have to work through some of the punch list items with them to... You know, they did go out. They did take care of the two driveways that they redid on Warren Street from the grading, was an issue with the residents, you know, actually bothering out with their cars. There are some trees that need to be replaced. There's a Verizon box that I need to... Now I know where it is. I went out there. It was not where I thought it was. So, anyway, I've got to go back out there and get to them. And then the challenge, I think the larger challenge is the quality of the grass strips in relation to, there is kind of a, there's inconsistency, you know. So, not every homeowner has kind of taken ownership, adopted that grass strip. So, which ultimately will be the end game, but we're in that in-between period between, you know, the developer and the homeowner. And so, anyway, we're trying to work through that right now. And then the one thing, and I happened in contact, talking to the new president, I guess it's president of the trustee?
Of the HOA.
Yeah, of HOA. There are some common areas and some landscape areas that, for example, like the islands, I don't think they're actually covered in your, I know you live there, but... Is to get them covered as far as the care and upkeep of them, because...
They have a, there's a landscaper that...
They do have a landscaper. But the way they planted out the island, it's grass there, so there's no irrigation, as you know. And so, need to kind of make sure when that transitions over to homeowners that the association's aware that that is their responsibility. So, I'm trying to work that through with them now, so.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next item, 32 Fredrickson Road Estate Lot, Request for Extension or Special Permit Decision, 2012-03 to November 15th this year. This is the sixth extension? I don't know how many it is. Six years?
Wow.
Or seven? Seventh, this is the seventh year, 2012.
Seven. 2012, yeah.
This gets the...
Yeah. Yeah. Well, seventh.
I don't know if I, I don't know if I'm interested in extending this for a seventh year personally.
I think you've got to recuse yourself.
It's not owned by my client anymore. It was bought from my client. There was some work done. They had a filing at Concom. And then the person that bought it just is trying to resell it.
Oh, okay.
They're trying to resell it for a price that's extremely high, so...
I think he's finally ready to apply for building permit.
Really? Well, this is not an extension for a year, is it? Or is it? Normally it is.
Yeah, a year.
It is? Till 11/15? Has he been in, Betsy?
He has.
Well, it's, yeah. To your point, it's not a full year, yeah.
So, technically, he's been out of bounds, so to speak, for about six months? Oh, this has already expired?
He has, yeah.
Yes.
Then that's, he's got to file for a new one then. We had this a few years ago.
It'll lapse.
Yeah, it's gone. So, he can't apply for a new one.
He can or cannot?
Cannot.
The Shepherd's applied for an extension in 2016. And so, that was granted.
2016, okay. Well, we could have him reapply.
Reapply. You can check that I'm right with the state, but I believe once it's expired, you can't redo it.
Where's the...
But before you notify him, Rich, why don't you double check?
The, wait a minute.
I remember that coming here in 2012 or 13. Are you sure it's expired already?
It did, because you guys had issued an extension...
Would have been back in October.
Uh, May 17th, you granted an extension till November 15th of 2016.
Yep.
16.
Then you granted an extension till November 15th, 2017.
So, the, the bylaw...
Okay, so we got, we're up to 17. Yeah, that's the date first.
Well, can we just check the history and talk about this next month?
So, that expired to November...
The bylaw allows you to renew without a hearing, but it lasts for two years, so...
Right. This is something different.
Yeah, so he's...
So, then you granted an extension till November 15th of 2018.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so...
So, November 18.
So, are there fees associated with each extension?
Yes.
And they can't pay late fees because it expires?
State government's controlled by the state government, so I don't believe you can...
As soon as it expires, the door closes.
Yes.
Same as the septic permit extension, all right? Along the premise.
Well, he's going to have to reapply then, most likely.
Okay. Okay. Understood.
All right.
So, he did apply for an extension. Should we have to hold a hearing? Uh, May, yeah, May 20th.
May 20th this year.
But it was expired.
It was expired at that point, right?
Yeah. Yeah, he wasn't one in the two, the extension timeframe.
Well, just as a matter of curiosity, if you look at a couple of those previous extension letters, the way we approved them, was he equally six months out of whack each time? Was, were they, they...
Were they all late?
Late requests?
Sounds like it.
No, the Shepherd's...
Well, to John's point, this was reviewed and discussed in 2012. A lot of things have come to pass in time since then.
Well, if he was timely with, I mean, within the, so the permit's good for two years. If he came in before the two years and asked for extension, the board could extend it.
Or we could not extend.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Apply for a new special permit?
Sounds like it.
Sounds like it.
Sounds like it. I'll go back to the beginning.
All right, let's move on. Meeting minutes, sir, as the last act of your secretarial responsibility.
Did you communicate your questions to Betsy?
I did. That's, I sent you a tweak on the minutes.
Yes, and Gary sent me some too as well.
My question had to do with Norfolk Landing. Mr. McCarthy said these departures could be approved as a minor modification to the approved subdivision plan. Did we actually do that that evening?
I've got to go back and listen to the tape. I had so many interruptions, I have no idea.
Yeah, okay. Fair enough. Fair enough. Okay.
So, we're not going to vote on the minutes?
I don't think we're...
Do that next meeting.
Next meeting, okay. All right, let's see. What's next? Town Planner Updates.
So, we, just a brief update. We did receive $15,000 from the state to do the Minnesota Vulnerability Preparedness Planning Grant.
Yep.
So, there's essentially, part of it is a meeting where you get together, people who focus around vulnerability related to climate change. You know, so it's police, fire, DPW, you know, Board of Health, Council on Aging, and talk about vulnerabilities. And then from that workshop discussion, then they put in a vulnerability plan, which kind of outlines things that we need to work on to address vulnerability related to climate change. And it's abroad. I mean, it's really tailored around, you know, what vulnerabilities we see as a community. And then once that plan is put together, then there is a pool of money that's available to the town to apply for funding for those activities. It's a wide, you know, it's a wide range of different activities, but... So, I don't have a date yet or anything scheduled, but we just, we just got the award this week or actually last week. Got the contracts in place. I'll give you more detail as we go forward, but...
Yep.
Is it state experts that are, that will come and discuss the impact on Norfolk?
So, they actually, they have facilitators, different consultants that go through a training program to conduct the regional plan. Agency does these as well. In this particular case, we've worked, are working with Beta to do it. They go through a training session to do the workshops and then also put these plans together. They have a list of them, so.
Okay.
That's what we'll be using. So, what's, things come together more as far as detail goes. I'll give you a little update.
Yep.
We did, so after the meeting, the special plan board meeting last Tuesday, I did, was at the selectmen's meeting. We did get some relief as far as the timeline on the B1 study, zoning study that we're working on right now. Through, so originally, we had to wrap everything up by June 30th. We got an extension to continue that work. So, Josh Fialaf, MAPC, is working towards putting together recommendations for zoning changes and also design guidelines. And a companion to that, which is here on your agenda, is submitting a housing choice capital grant. And the project for which we're identifying to apply funding for is the wastewater treatment plant evaluation for the B1 zone. The, so I don't know if you had a chance to take a look at that scope or not, but I sent off a draft. There's really, one piece of this we've been talking about is the plan itself. 30,000 gallons a day designed plant. Originally was going to be completely a private plant. Through the development or the lack of development, the town ended up acquiring the plant in 2015, I think, if my date's correct. All the sewer capacity is proportioned really between four entities. They pay a flow, based on flow. 12,000 gallons a day. Another one's 11,000 gallons a day. So, the DEP had said that they recognize the actual design flow versus the actual amount of flow that's going to the plant, there will be a differential. And there is a process that the town could apply through DEP to hire a professional engineer to assess and do evaluation of the plant and the field and so forth from an engineering standpoint, to see if we can send additional wastewater to that plant.
Well, design is 30,000 a gallon.
30,000, right.
And the actual flow is what?
I think we're at 6,000 right now.
Yeah, so it's plenty of capacity. It would look like, you know.
So, there's, so there is unused capacity that's available to us. But part of this study is actually to take a look and see if we could expand on that plant as a plant for treatment, but then create another field for the gray water.
Increase capacity beyond the 30,000?
Right. Now, maybe that doesn't work and we need to think about another plant down the line. But in the larger picture, some of the zoning work that we did and some of the evaluation with the B1 is that the sewer would certainly be a big help to the different property owners for development, redevelopment, because of trying to site a septic system on the property along with a building and dealing with stormwater, because stormwater is, you know, has to be handled on-site within the B1. It starts to, it's a little bit of a tricky puzzle to make all that work. Last year, we were trying to tackle the stormwater. We were trying to send the water, we do have a stormwater system for the B1 zone. It originally was, so right, that wasn't permanent for additional impervious to go down there. We applied for that to try to get that funded through this grant program. But as we've been digging even more, I think the better bang for our buck, so to speak, would be to try to tackle the wastewater side as opposed to the stormwater. So...
Well, stormwater could follow, you know, after we get the...
It could follow, yeah.
Because we have that, we have a need in the town center to tap into that. There are people who have tapped into it now.
Right. There is, yeah. So, we won't necessarily say we're going to give up on the stormwater side of it, but clearly the wastewater, and the best example, I think, was Dunkin' Donuts that, you know...
Wastewater takes precedent.
You know, the possibility for him to be able to do wastewater and not do a septic system on that field, open up a door to him to his, take his whole entire property and rethink about it. And I think he was at least considering things I think the town would be overall would like to see long-term. And it would work for him as a property owner, so. And there are other property owners as well that would like to see sewer that could help with their property for redevelopment, so.
And we mentioned Josh is going to make recommendations of changes to zoning and I think that all overlaps. Is there, the opportunity to do apartments is supported by the wastewater as well?
It is, yes. I'll just give you just a touch of a preview, at least some, kind of that overview. So, what Josh is doing, he's doing essentially taking our existing zone and doing a build-out analysis of applying our present standards and then looking at some zoning changes. And some of the zoning that we have in place seems to work on a smaller parcel. Like, you know, as far as the requirements, they're not as restrictive. But as you start to apply those standards to a much larger parcel, then the economics are really bumping up against people not being able. And I think that's not a mystery to a lot of people. I think you've heard many people come in and tell you the same thing. But hopefully, that work and presenting that to town meeting would, you know, enlighten people a little bit about the challenges.
How are we going to get out in front of presenting it at the town meeting? So that it's not being presented for the first time at the town meeting? You know, we had that meeting... You know, we had that meeting, sort of working meeting, which was lightly attended, but are we going to have another one of, like, can Josh lead another meeting that says, you know, these are the, these are the things that we found through the process of working through the committee?
That's what I'm asking, asking them to do for us, because the pitch, you know, the whole, the larger picture is the...
Would he even come to town meeting?
He would, yeah. And they have, so I'm, I know that when Rentham had passed them zoning last fall for their downtown, that MAPC was a different person, but they went to town meeting as well to help field questions and talk about it, and I think...
Great, we should figure out what that plan is.
Yeah.
Because we got to get out in front of it.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I'm trying to, yeah, I need to kind of do some budget management to get some money to be able to do that. I mean, it's worth it, because it's a good investment, I think the return would be good. So, I agree, I think we need to spread the word out ahead of time. There was even just food for thought if you thought about this, but some discussion about maybe having a special meeting just dedicated to this, as opposed to being mingled with the fall town meeting, which would include other articles. There's pluses to that, and there potentially could be minuses to that, but, so anyway, that's just something to give consideration to as we go forward, but...
And the actual changes, that, so someone recommends changes, and then you're trying to implement changes, are they voted on by the town, or...
Yeah, town meeting, yes, so... And I think, you know, not to tip the hat too much, but I've seen at least a draft of it, and I think there's some good sense in trying to line things up to make more logical sense of things. And not, eliminate some of the conflicts that we have in the bylaw. So what we're, so since we got the extension, we're looking at, which I know, I know Aaron's available, but I did see, we were trying to do something the week of July 4th, I don't think that's going to happen now, because at least to have the B1 working group, so we're probably looking the week at, well, maybe two weeks out from there, so, I'll send a...
Okay.
And then what I would do is, I think, we might want to do another joint meeting again, you know, have the planning board come? We could, maybe it'd be outside the planning board meeting, not the next meeting, I'll have to try to figure that out, so maybe I ask you to come for a joint meeting.
All right.
It's going, not as quickly as I think many people would want, so...
It's going.
But it's going.
Okay.
Get through our list.
Summer meeting schedule, next meeting we have is July 9th. The following one, I cannot do the 13th of August. So I would propose an alternative, which would be the previous Thursday, which would be the 8th, or I could do, we could do this Tuesday, the 6th, which would be one week earlier. What, what do you think you could accommodate, gentlemen?
I am also out on the 13th, so anything that prior week would be much better, 6th works for the 8th.
6th or the 8th works, how about it?
Works for me, sure, either one.
Aaron, what do you think? Either one is okay. John, what do you think?
For August?
Yeah.
Not exactly sure yet. Vacation coming up, I'm not sure if it's the second week or the third week.
For the 3rd week.
Well, August...
So that one, I'm not here.
The second week is the 12th, am I reading that right, the second week is the 12th of this? So if we did something in here, that would probably work for you.
That would be better.
Okay, so which was your, all right, so given that we're all available, are you folks available for the 6th or the 8th?
I know Betsy's not, but...
Betsy's not, okay. Could we have someone else sit in?
You guys can make do without me, right?
Well, we could, maybe we could get...
Yeah, I mean, we can. Now, the other alternative is August 1st.
That's awful close, though, isn't it?
Yeah.
Well, I suppose.
July 9th, August 1st.
That's not, that's not horrible, right?
I could do the 1st, if that's preferable.
If it goes the other way, if you move out to the week of the 20th, you're going to be close to September 10th.
Yeah, yeah, so I could do August 1st, John, you could do August 1st?
I don't know.
You don't know?
I don't know.
Well, we, I'll put it this way, if, if...
We got four.
We could, we can work, we can work, we could survive one meeting without Betsy, I think, might be hard.
Well, could we get Amy to sit in?
Sure, we want to find out.
Maybe.
Yeah.
Okay, what, August 1st at least worked for you?
Sure. If he ends up... First works, yep.
August 1st worked for you?
We'll still have four.
On a summer meeting?
Sure.
Sure, all right.
We'll have a new member, so it'll be easier to meet more.
Huh?
Eighty-five in here?
We're ever get through this?
Which cracks the window.
Yeah, I know.
We turn up the age in this, right?
Yeah.
I have like forty-five minutes of stuff here, so...
All right?
You think August 1st?
Gets it to four and a half minutes, and you've got a shot, go ahead. What do you got?
All right, from our mailbox, a lot of interesting stuff, there was a big pile here, so, Medway, one hundred ninety rental units, forty-eight of which will be lower moderate income, pretty big development. Just to belabor my point I was trying to make with the affordable housing, three units have sold the Boyd's Crossing for under $200,000. A $600,000 payment would buy three affordable units. Town of Medway, 12-unit condominium development, it's been a while since we've seen a condominium development. Marijuana dispensary in Meliss.
Really? Okay.
Town of Meliss, there's a little run here in Meliss, forty-four lot open space preservation, forty-eight lot open space preservation development, and Glen Ellen is transitioning to age-restricted, 55 and over.
That I knew, that I knew, yeah.
The country club?
Yes, they're closed. The Town of Franklin, they're changing their residential zoning guidelines, it looks like they're making some of their residential zoning more dense. Town of Franklin, a 60-unit affordable rental senior housing project. Town of Franklin, a 58 single-family residential building lot subdivision, that's a lot of houses. And they made some changes to their water resource district amendments, they don't say what they were.
Franklin did.
Franklin did, and that's just interesting because of all the talk going on at Kingsbury Pond, right?
Yep.
Non-medical marijuana in Franklin. How'd it do, they do that four and a half minutes?
Did a good job.
Yeah.
Great.
That's what's going on with our neighbors.
Thank you, sir. If we have any other items of business this evening, then Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.